Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 21st meeting of the Williamson County School Board. Welcome everyone here and everyone at home who may be watching. If you've not, nothing better on TV, be glad to join us and watch at home, too. We have, for the first thing, the Recorder Attendance Board Members. If you'd record your attendance, please, that And then I'd like to ask Deputy Stephen Brogdon and Ron Hooper to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you'd remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, our next item is Items of Partic- of a Particular Public Interest or Public Comment Time. We did not have anyone sign up this evening to speak to us, so we move right to our approval of the agenda. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion to approve.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Anderson. May I, may I speak up? Sorry, I didn't realize you needed to sign up for public speaking.
No, sir, I'm sorry. We've moved past that time now. You're welcome to talk to the Board Members after the meeting, if you'd like. But right now, we've moved past that and went to approval of our main agenda items.
Here we go.
Okay, Mr. Welch made a motion. Anyone like to second it?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Mr. Fiskus. Any comment?
Point one.
Yes, sir.
Is there, we've got 30 minutes for public comment. Is it necessary that they sign up, or don't we usually ask for other speakers?
Our, our board policy has been that they sign up prior to the meeting. We have it posted that they have to sign up by 6:25 if they want to speak to the board. So I was following our board policy at this point. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Welch, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Is it possible to bring forth a motion to make an exception to policy tonight? I, I realize you're acting within our, our policies moving forward, and I appreciate that, Mr. Anderson, because that's the role we've elected to do, and you're, you're fulfilling that, so not trying to, to show you up anyway. But as, as we don't have any speakers tonight, we've not had any. I'd like to make a motion to make an exception for policy.
Mr. Welch, at this point, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'd like us to vote on that motion, and then you could make your motion once we have.
I'm amenable to that. Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. We're going to use the machine. All right, go ahead and record your votes on the machine, please. There it is. Can she change her?
If you want to, you can change your vote by voice vote.
I'd like to change my vote to a yes.
Okay, so we have, we have approved the agenda, and Mr. Welch, if you'd like to make a motion for that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend policy to allow any speaker or speakers tonight that, you know, through good faith effort, just missed the opportunity to sign up, as we've had no speakers sign up tonight, and do have 30 minutes allotted.
Okay, we have a second from Mr. Mitchell. Board Members, if we vote to do this, we would need to send it back to policy. On that particular policy, we'd send it back to the Policy Committee for review. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this request?
Since this is not loaded, if we could have a voice vote.
Okay, Mr. Wimberly.
I withdraw.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All right, then we're voting on the motion to allow, allow one speaker, the one speaker that, allow one speaker to speak to us this evening as part of our normal process of public comment. So we'd like to have the Director's Recommendation.
I recommend approval.
Okay, y'all ready to vote? Go ahead and vote, please.
It'll be voice.
I'm sorry, voice vote. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Angela Durham.
Yes.
Dan Cash.
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Jake Albert.
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Yes.
Candy Emerson.
Yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Yes.
Eric Welch.
Yes.
Casey Hall.
Yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Yes.
Sir, if you'd come forward, please, state your name, address, and the topic you wish to discuss.
Thank you. My name is Chris Vernon, and my address is 2216 Winder Circle. That's in Franklin, 37064. We live in Dallas Downs subdivision, and I'm here to speak about the, the middle school naming that you all are going to adopt tonight. So I, I really appreciate your graciousness for, for your gesture and your giving me the opportunity. And I apologize for disturbing procedure and protocol, sir. I'm here to, or we are here to advocate that you name the new school on Henpeck Lane, Oakview Middle School. There were three names, as you know, brought up at your work session. I enjoyed watching it and listening to the, the banter. But the reason why we want the name Oakview Middle School is that it represents the community. It's not so much a location. It's not an elementary school. It is a community. My wife and I have lived here for nearly 18 years, 19 years, and most of that, or not, about half the time, we've not had any children. We've been blessed since. All that time, our area has been referenced as Oakview. Not the school, the area. It's a community. It is more than just a spot on the map. And in fact, if you were to Google Oakview, you would not find a town or anything like it. It is simply an area, much like Grassland to the north of Franklin. Well, it's North Franklin. And to that point, you never hear the name or the word South Franklin. You just don't. Much like you never really hear the words North Franklin, you hear Grassland because it's a community, right? Well, that's what Oakview is. It's a community. And as far as, I got a great question from a Board Member, Garrett, this weekend, and she said, well, what about the individuals who don't go to Oakview Elementary School and are coming into Oakview or the middle school? What do you say to them? And I said, that's a great question. It's a fair question. And my answer is, you are part of the community. You are part of the community. We are a community. You are included and always have been. If you look at the footprint for the original Oakview Elementary School, and that was with, I think everyone's, one of everyone's favorites, that's Denise Goodwin, principal. The footprint for Oakview Elementary School is remarkably similar to the middle school footprint. Children that have gone, gone to Winstead, children that have gone to Thompson Station Elementary School, they originally went to Oakview. Hence, it's a community. And that's what I respectfully would tell those individuals. And there are some individuals in, in a neighborhood, I believe it's River Landing, that Ms. Garrett represents, a couple of neighborhoods that are, have just been built in the last year and a half and never went to Oakview, obviously. But they are part of the Oakview community. It's an identity, and it's an identity that we want to, to display to the whole county when you have an athletic contest or a competition or. At Oakview Middle School, you know where it is, and I believe that's what Dr. Webb said in her presentation to you all last week. You know where Oakview is, even if you're outside of the zone. You know where Oakview is, much like you know where Hillsborough Middle School is, or Hillsborough Elementary School, or Grassland Elementary School, or Grassland Middle School. Everyone in the county knows where those locations are.
Okay, sir, your, your three minutes is, is up.
Okay.
If you'd go ahead and finish up, please, quickly.
Yes, sir. The will of the public is demonstrated in what you've seen in perhaps your, your email responses and your communications. It is what I have experienced in the last several days when I've canvassed my neighborhood and talked to folks outside of our neighborhood, even folks in McLemore Farms way down south, and, and South Point, and Keystone. They prefer Oakview Middle School. Of the name submissions you got, two-thirds of them were for Oakview Middle School. Of all the submissions, two-thirds.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we are to the approval of the Consent Agenda. Would anyone like to motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Ms. Garrett, make the motion. You'd like to second that?
Second.
We have, we have a second from Mr. Wimberly. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda items? Okay, Superintendent's Recommendation.
Recommend approval.
All right, if you're ready to vote.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. With the approval of the Consent Agenda, we approved the November 18th, 2019 School Board Meeting Minutes. We approved Board Policies on Second Reading, 1.403 Agendas, and 6.412 Emergency Allergy Response Plan. We, we approved the Annual Review of Board Policies. We approved the Recommendations for Field Trip Fee Requests. We approved Fairview Elementary School deed to the Tennessee Department of Transportation. We approved Mallory Valley Utility District Request for Temporary Construction and Permanent Waterline Easement for Centennial High School Property. We approved the Hazard Mitigation Grant Resolution, and we approved the Revised Five-Year Capital Plan. The next item is Communications to the Board. Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to mention a few things to you. First, I appreciate the Edmonton Elementary Choir singing. If I'm not mistaken, was it three or maybe four themed songs related to snow falling? So I very much appreciate that.
Miss Birdsong really enjoyed the snow.
Carol Birdsong. Yeah, so I have a one, kind of silly anecdote about the, the very important vote on the, on the naming of the school. Historically, Carol Birdsong gets a small handful of votes, no matter what, no matter where. Somebody recommends Carol Birdsong, elementary or middle, or even high school. This year, she did not get any votes, and I'm concerned because we have not had a snow day in a long time. With that being said, we, of course, respect Mother Nature. I did want to let you all know, I know a Board Member or two had asked me about our process for, for deciding how and when to close, and so we have republished in our InFocus article a story. We, we, we brought it to a little bit more current times, have some clips of a process we went through with a local weather, weathercaster about the process we go through. So I do invite you, in that context, to look up InFocus. I will also say, InFocus is full of good information. As an example, we are going through the process of our ELA, English Language Arts, adoption for, for textbooks, and we reference that in our InFocus publication as well, so everybody, everybody can see those dates. So I invite you to look at that. I also want to mention to you that tomorrow at 11:30 a.m., Ms. Birdsong and I will be doing a Facebook Live. We have, since I've been Superintendent, gotten into the habit of having our community meetings through Facebook Live online. We've concluded, and I think the facts have borne us out, that having that communication online allows a lot more parents to participate and ask us questions than, than the old tradition of having, having a meeting at a physical location where folks have to schedule time. So I do encourage you to look at that, and of course, we keep those, those, those Facebook Live times up on the website so that you can go back and look as well. So we do encourage folks to participate in that. Do, did want to also let you know that Creekside Elementary's First Student Day is tomorrow. So that's, that's, that's going to be the beginning of a lot of great things at Creekside. We're very excited. The teachers have moved in, students have toured it, and tomorrow is their actual first day in their building. So it's going to be kind of a first day of school of sorts for those elementary school students, and they're all going to have that first day together. We're very excited about that. I intend to be there in the morning, and we're looking forward to that. One net effect from that is there's going to be a little bit less traffic in the Oakview area than, than, than we've experienced historically the last few, the last few years. Every time we open a new school, I get the question about, doesn't that increase traffic? Well, the answer I give is, every time we open a school, the miles that a family goes to school, that a bus goes to school inherently shrinks, right? Every time there's a new school, the, the, the route gets a little bit shorter as we grow. What increases traffic is cars. As our community grows, traffic increases. But every time a school opens, there is, of course, some congestion right around the school, but in, but, but we, we are able to reduce the total of miles that folks travel every time we open a new school. Final thing related to that is we, well, actually, Mr. Anderson was going to mention the ribbon cutting, so I'll, I'll, go ahead. We are having our ribbon cutting on Sunday afternoon at 2 o'clock for Creekside Elementary, and we in, looking forward to families and, and the students coming to that ribbon cutting. We've had so many events the last two months since the Board met in November, both athletic and arts, just extracurricular work. And I, the one thing I want to mention, again, related to InFocus is, dig through that publication and find those events that, that might attract your attention, whether it's children, grandchildren, friends of the family who are performing, whether athletically or in, or in the arts. There are a lot of great things going on at Williamson County Schools. And, Mr. Chair, that is the Superintendent's Report. Our next item is the Student and Staff Spotlight.
Student and Staff Spotlights for the District Update. I want to welcome Carol Birdsong to the podium.
Thank you. And because we've been off for a couple of months, we have to go back and honor several students that we normally would have honored in December. So we have a long list to honor tonight, and we're going to start with perfect ACT scores. So Mr. Kydell and Connor, come on up. So everybody, this is Connor, and Connor earned his perfect score in October during the October test. Connor, if you'll just stand over here while we honor a few, few of your peers from Brentwood. Ginger Buck, Ginger, come on up. And folks, if you want to take pictures, now is a good time. Turn around, Ginger, so everybody can take a picture. And Ginger scored during the September testing time period. And next, we have Catherine Grippenstraw. Catherine, come on up. And Catherine earned her score during the September testing period. And next, we have Thomas Stewart. Thomas, come on up. And next, we have Phoebe Young, also from Brentwood. And Phoebe, Phoebe earned her score during the October testing period. And if you guys want a group picture of these fine students, Mr. Kydell, hop on over there. Okay, are we good? All right, very good. Okay, congratulations to the Brentwood students. Dr. Sanders, if I could have you come up, and from Centennial High School, Neil Ices, Let me talk about Neil just for a minute. Neil earned his score during the October testing period. Okay, and here's posters for you guys. Okay, so you are the only one from Centennial, so you're, you're good. You're good, Neil. Congratulations to Neil. Our Franklin students aren't here. Mingjian and Nicholas are not here tonight, but they earned their scores during the September and October testing period, respectfully. So from Nolansville, if I could have Sidney Hummel and Dr. Bill Harland come up, please. Sidney earned her perfect score during the October testing period. And Mr. Mason, if you'll come on up. We have some students from Ravenwood we're going to honor. Min Kalasicum, come on up, Min. Oh, I didn't know you had your medals. Right, right, there you go. I was talking to you. And Min earned her perfect score during the October testing period. Andrew Kepec, Andrew, come on up. Andrew earned his perfect score during the October And I don't think Adam's with us tonight, so if you'll take Adam's medal and the posters, that would be great. So congrats to our Ravenwood students. And then Dr. Lamb, just double-checking, your student was not able to be here.
He was with the mayor.
Oh, man. Oh, I can't believe that was said. Okay, Neva Brinson is our Summit student who earned a perfect score, and if you don't mind taking her, her medal and her posters. We had 13 students this, this time that we have honored with perfect ACT scores. So one more round of, 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 you guys.
Carol, if I may, I just wanted to let the public who might be watching know that what we heard was Neva was receiving another award at the same time.
Yes, that is correct. So, okay, so now we're going to move to athletics, and whoops, athletics. And again, this happened a bit back, but this is Tim Coo-, I'm not saying it right, Cutress, Cutress from Nolansville High School, and he was named the Tennessee Titans' Mr. Football for Division One, Class 4A, and his coach is Paul Derrick. And then we are going to move into the arts. So, in the next bit, you are going to hear about the Middle Tennessee School Band and Orchestra Association. We're going to start with All-State Band from Brentwood High School, Rena Schu and Simon Biddle. Their instructors are Drew O'Keefe and Katie Nicholson. From Centennial High School, Evan Manley. Scott Miller is his band instructor. And then, from Nolansville High School, Malik Chismasin, Casey Martins, Kate Campbell, Hannah Goldstone, Sam Pearson, Benjamin Easley, Michael Holland, their instructors. From Page High School, Connor Flat, Michael Rossen, his instructor. From Ravenwood High School, Joshua Chu, Matthew Lu, and Bill Lee. Krish Janiwich is their instructor. And from Summit High School, Dorothy Burt and Brennan Angus, Eric Harris, their instructor. Now we move to All-State Band. Amy Schu, Joanne Kang, and Bright Johnston. Drew O'Keefe and Tiffany Turner, their instructors. From Franklin High School, Dylan Cook and Marcus Chin. Cassandra Brosvik, their instructor. And from Nolansville High School, Kerrigan Mandrell. Anna Touchstone, Kragnadull, their instructor. And from Ravenwood High School, Kaitlin Waljack, Sophie Lee, Ria Mitra, Savor Chuck Gordy, Madeline Adams, Gail Hernandez, Palmer, Selena Wang, and Kristen Lee. Cassandra Brosvik, their instructor. Again, that was your All-State Orchestra. In Staff Spotlights, the Tennessee Association for the Gifted, Teacher of the Year, Linda Kirby from Lipscomb Elementary School. And also, that same organization gave the Horizon Award to Megan Dennis from Renaissance High School. Congratulations to all of our student and staff members.
Anything else from your report?
No, sir, that's our report.
All right. Congratulations. All right, the next item we have is the Board Chairman's Report. Don't forget your Conflict of Interest Report for the State. Mentioned that Thursday night. Don't forget to send that in by, by January 31st. And Board Training. Don't forget to sign up for your mandatory annual board training sessions. Y'all look so excited about that, as we all are, so don't forget that. Jason's already told you about the ribbon cutting, so that's all I had in my report. All right, we're ready to move on to New Business. We don't have any unfinished business, so New Business, the 2019-2020 School Board Budget, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment for State Grants. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item in the finance portion of the New Business is application for state grants. It includes a number of grants for elementary, for STEM, which will include some, some, some supplies for the libraries related to STEM, and for two high schools for early post-secondary expansion, which is our Teaching as a Profession Career Tech Program. Recommend approval.
Anyone like to make a motion on this? We have a motion for Ms. Emerson to second it. Mr. Cash has a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I see none. We have the Superintendent's Recommendation. If you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. Next one is General Purpose School Fund Budget Resolution, Special Education Teachers. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our, our staffing needs requires us, require us to ask for three additional special education teachers here, kind of in the mid, middle part of the budget year. And I know a question that came up at the work session was, well, if, if we're really struggling to even staff these positions, is there value in you asking, or could we just staff them, staff them, staff these positions as they, as they come, rather than us ask for a budget amendment? And so I certainly invite you to ask Leslie Homing questions related to this, but our conclusion is, for the Position Control Report, we felt like it was important to, to notice you and the County Commission that this is a needed position. As I've looked at our staffing, we are actually district-wide short on three special edu- education teachers right now, but the need is for a total of six. And if we can staff them, we will, based on your approval. And if not, then they will be in the budget for this year because the need occurred this year. With that being said, if we don't spend the money, then it will ultimately go to fund balance. And again, I, I welcome any other questions related to that. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Anyone like to make a motion for this one? Okay, we have a motion for Ms. Cleveland. We have a second for Ms. Emerson. Any further discussion on this request? Any further discussion on this request? Mr. Wimbley.
Mr. Golden, what is our long-term prospect and challenges for staffing special ed positions?
Special education positions are a special challenge for us and really across the region and the state and even nationally. We are in the process of working with some local universities, and we believe we have a potential with one university we're almost ready to talk to you about to do what kind of the industry calls Grow Your Own. It's a program for teachers assistants who actually have undergraduate degrees to take just the small number of classes it takes to get a license, where we project that we'll work through some of our federal funds, share that expense with both the university and our teachers so that we can convert some of our special education teachers assistants into licensed special education teachers. That's one example that we're working on right now. The reality is, this is a real challenge for everyone. It's going to take some revamping at the university level. We're even looking at our Teaching as a Profession program for our high school students to project out whether we can work on some kind of a commitment from our high school students to come back, you know, when they go through the collegiate program, to come serve the students. But it's really going to take multiple fronts. The most recent front we're addressing is that Grow Your Own.
May I ask a follow-up question? You mentioned something at the work session about the nature of our special ed work changing. Could you please restate that?
Sure. I believe, long-term, that we're going to see an evolution and transition in special education services, and it's largely a result of RTI, the Response to Intervention that we discussed. The specific learning disabilities, which are what people might have thought traditionally as learning disabilities, such as reading, dyslexia, and that genre of disabilities are being addressed through the Response to Intervention Program. We have seen our numbers of specific learning disability students actually go down as students graduate out, and many students who are receiving these interventions without an IEP are actually not needing an IEP. So the short version is, we have seen some statistical information that indicates Response to Intervention is working. Those numbers are shrinking. However, the lower incidence, what special education professionals call lower incidence disabilities, which an ordinary person might think of as more severe disabilities, in Williamson County is growing. We're growing in our numbers, and disabilities that require a little more intensive assistance are growing in numbers in Williamson County. And that includes emotional disturbance, autism spectrum disorders, many other disorders that might require more involved supports from special education teachers assistants and special education teachers. We project that with this RTI program, the nature of special ed services, it's going to grow and become more complex over this next decade or two.
So how is our staffing for the coaches and the intervention, what, the RTI professionals?
You know, you've heard the proverbial line, unfunded mandate. And so we actually have a lot of coaches. The title we use is coaches, but intervention, response to intervention, requires intervention at both what they call Tier Two and Tier Three, and we discussed this in detail at the work session. Every year, from a budget perspective, we will be growing our requests for those intervention positions so that teachers can give direct services to students in that context to help them grow, and also so that our teachers can coach teachers, especially those less experienced teachers who are early in their career, on how to teach. And so we know that we have had a budget impact with RTI, and we expect that budget impact to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second. And we have the director's recommendation. If you'd go ahead and record your votes now, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Thank you, Board. Our next item is General Purpose School Fund Budget Resolution on copy paper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a request to you to increase our copy paper budget line item by $55,000, which is, I'm estimating somewhere around 12% increase. The large element of this, we have determined is a result of our OER social studies, that teachers are printing out more. And we actually think that's a good thing, but this is one of those items that we didn't anticipate fully in the budget. There's also been a slight increase in the cost of paper. That's a small portion of this. I did want to let the Board know that in the coming budget, we're actually talking about having an increased line item because of that change. The flip side of that coin is, we have talked to our administrators about making sure they're efficient with their use of paper. This is a new thing, at least in the past dozen or so years, that we've had this increase. And so ultimately, we see it as a relatively small offset on the money that we were able to save with the OER and not purchasing social studies books last year. Recommend approval.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion on the copy paper. We have a motion from Mr. Mitchell. I heard a second over here, Mr. Welch. Any further comments or questions, Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Golden, I had asked at the work session if we needed to consider a similar adjustment to the line item for toner. Did we get a chance to review whether we needed to do that or not?
Yes, sir, we did check that. Our purchasing managers spoke with our contractor, who, as an aside, is actually the state contract that we piggyback off of. The determination was that a toner's not an issue, so we're fine on that. But thank you for asking that.
Any other questions? Okay, I see none. We have the superintendent's recommendation. Go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. The next item is the 2020-2021 Open Zone Schools. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you all know from our work session, annually, we submit our open zone school request to you. There is a little bit of discretion, actually some significant amount of discretion for the Board in the way this particular law is written, and this reflects our recommendation based on our projection in our five-year growth projections and comparing that to our capacities at our schools and our feeder patterns. So we recommend approval.
Anyone like to make a motion on this one? We have a motion from Mr. Welch, anyone can second it. A second from Mr. Hall. Any comments? Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I had mentioned in the work session, I'm gonna, I would like to add Spring Station Middle to this list, so therefore I'd like to make a motion to amend this list. I move to allow 25 students from Heritage Middle or Thompson Station Middle to attend Spring Station Middle. This open zone allowance would be for the 2021 school year.
Okay, we have a motion. Anyone like to second that motion? I'm sorry, that amendment. Okay, we have a second from Mr. Galbraith. Okay? Any further discussion?
So if I may, well, I still have the floor, I believe. So during our rezoning board meeting earlier, previously in the year, I guess, or last year, there were several board members who stated their denial against my grandfathering motion was based on a preference that this be done via the open zoning process. So tonight, I'm asking that we offer up a limited solution to those parents who respectfully asked us to, that we allow their rising seventh graders to stay at Spring Station. I'm only asking for 25 students from either school, not both schools, but from either school. And I'll make the point that this would not be a significant impact on the coming year or the following year, given the numbers that we were told during our work session. And I'll also point out that compared to the amount of grandfathering we did in Nolansville last year, that a majority of this board approved, this request is extremely limited in comparison. So I would ask my colleagues to approve this request for my district.
Thank you. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to piggyback what Elliot's talking about. We did have a big discussion about opening zoning and allowing some from Thompson Station and Heritage to go north if they so choose. And it was kind of shocking to see that they weren't on the list, so I suggest we approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Galbraith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just around that discussion, I think the hesitancy, I was in favor of it, but I think the hesitancy from several board members was the fact that the change in the grandfathering rules was, in fact, setting aside policy. And maybe, and I think, pretty sure we agreed to review that policy because of that discussion, which is completely fine. I'm just wanting to state that, as we do, I think this is a fine mechanism to do this. We do it every year, and it might be a way to stay within policy, to keep the policy the same, but to make any adjustment that we want to do through the open zoning. And we can be as specific as we want to about which students are eligible if we need to in the future. So I'm in favor. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Wimbley.
Yes, can we get a staff recommendation on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Sure. I'm not in a position to recommend approval, and I say that respectfully. Also, I want to let you all know that we'll certainly honor whatever you choose to do. I will give you a little bit of background, and when we went through the rezoning process, Ms. Pulliam said, "Oh, I hate to lose anybody." And that, you know, that's really what I love to hear from principals, because those principals love every single one of their students. But because we made the recommendation to rezone, I don't feel like I'm in the position to recommend it. We looked at our numbers. We're at about 87% capacity for Spring Station. We do anticipate growth in that area. If you do it, just like in Nolansville, to Mr. Mitchell's point, there'll be a little bit of a, you know, a delay in the relief. And I'm giving you a lot of detail, because I want you to hear my reasoning for the recommendation as well. The Summit Zone is currently overcrowded. Summit High School is currently overcrowded. We have on the five-year capital plan an expansion that's scheduled to open in about two and a half years. And I'll acknowledge that high schools can handle overcrowding a little bit better than elementaries, right? Because of the way classes flow, they're not assigned to one classroom, they can move around a little bit. So we can survive either way, but from a recommendation standpoint, we did not include it in the recommendation because it's hard to justify open zoning after we told folks they have to leave. With that being said, in any event, I couldn't recommend, but I would like to ask for a clarification of Mr. Mitchell based on the way he made his motion and the subsequent discussion that I heard from a couple other board members. Is your intent to open it to anybody at Thompson Station or Heritage with your motion? Or is your intent to open zone it to those who were rezoned from Spring Station to either one of those schools?
So my desire, so as I have gotten, as I made the motion, you're right, it was pretty much anybody going to the two schools. But the intent was to strictly offer this relief to the folks that were rezoned. So I would be glad to, if somebody can offer suggested verbiage to do that, I would be glad to modify my motion as such.
So, Mr. Mitchell, what I heard was your motion to amend would allow 25 students from Heritage Middle or Thompson Station Middle who were previously rezoned?
Yes, that was my intent of the motion.
To Spring Station for the 2020-2021 school year? And as the maker of the motion, that's what you would like your motion to amend?
Well, that was my intent, but I'm open to discussion on that.
And then if the person who seconded is in agreement, then we can move forward.
Okay, Mr. Welch.
Mr. Golden, just to clarify, with this, we would not be required to provide transportation. Anyone operating out of zone would be required to provide their own transportation, yes?
That is correct.
Okay. But what it would be under existing policy is anyone who attends out of zone, the sibling policy would go into effect, thereby having a ripple effect lasting one or more students down the line as well.
That is correct.
Okay. Not unreasonable motion by any stretch, but I do, not speaking directly to this, but I think related to it, is I think we're now getting to the point where we are using exceptions to policy to justify future exceptions to policy. And this is exactly what we've been talking about with opening up a Pandora's Box when we do these things. It's now just not a one offset, but Mr. Mitchell's own justification, he pointed to what we did in the Nolansville area. So when we think about these things, whether it's specifically or just zonings in general, I want to point out that we are, every time we veer from policy, it creates an exponentially larger issues for us to deal with, the further and further we go down the road and more and more, you know, zonings that we do, when we do veer from what we've all agreed in the steps, these are the groundwork, and this is the process, and this is what staff has made the recommendation upon.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to, I guess, make one point to Mr. Golden's comment about Summit. These students were zoned, are zoned for Summit anyway, so this has no impact on the enrollment at Summit, because we did not rezone any of the high school in our rezoning.
Good point. Thank you for that.
Mr. Golden, I know you probably aren't prepared to answer this, but you know how many students were rezoned who actually moved from Heritage and Thompson Station to Spring Station? Would it be impacting reversing that?
Mr. Chair, I'm trying to remember that off the top of my head. I can actually find that answer fairly quickly, and based on projections, because it's an estimate, because folks are ultimately not going to make that decision until the end of the window for them to choose open zoning, because eighth graders have the potential to be grandfathered in. But to answer your question, I'm going to pull up the current enrollment figures and compare them to our projections for this coming year at Spring Station. We're projecting 848, and the current enrollment at Spring Station, or at least at the beginning of this school year, was 1,048. So it's about 200 students who are projected net to be rezoned out.
And, Mr. Mitchell, your motion is asking, is asking to leave those students there, basically, as under revising this grandfathering?
No, this is, this is open zoning a total of 25 students from either school. So it's not, it's not basically, it's not walking back the rezoning, it's just giving a first-come, first-served opportunity to 25 students between the two schools, the two groups that were rezoned to the school.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, to piggyback on that, realistically, we're talking about sixth or seventh graders, because the eighth graders already have that ability to grandfather.
That is correct, yeah.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a follow-up question. Mr. Mitchell did reference an earlier discussion about having these, having... Mr. Mitchell did reference an earlier discussion about having these, having these discussions during the open zoning period, and that did seem like a, a good place to discuss these items, because the dust would have settled from the rezoning, and we might see some unintended consequences. So when I left the work session last week, I, my impression was that staff was going to look into this, but I had an impression that this might, this, this request might meet staff approval. But are you, would you clarify, after looking at it, it does not meet staff approval?
Yes, ma'am. And, and, and part of it, of course, I didn't know exactly what the motion was, but it is, it's because of the, because we, we recommended to open, to, to, to rezone a sufficient number to give Spring Station some room. And so from an administrative perspective, from our perspective at the Central Office Administration, we, we can't recommend it. Looking back, if, if we felt like it was too much, we might have made a recommendation to shrink the, the portion of the zone that we were, that we recommended, the, the zoning change, when we, when we factored in the numbers. But again, we, we recognize that it's a, it's a difficult issue for the board, but based upon our board policy and our ability to plan, I don't feel like I can, I can recommend this change. We will honor, obviously, the board is, you know, given your comments, thinking hard about this, will respect the, the decision you make, but I can't recommend it based on, based on the work we've done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah, just something real quick. We're assuming that twenty-five students will step up. We're assuming that the parents will drive them to school, and we're making a lot of assumptions that the max are going to be there, and twenty-five students are going to leave, the rest of their friends, what, two hundred we said got rezoned? That we're going, they're going to leave their friends. So to me, moving, open zoning twenty-five students, I mean, I'll be surprised, or twenty-five, I'll be surprised if that many students go, because they're leaving a lot of people behind also. So it's got to be under very special circumstances that twenty-five students are going to make that decision, and the parents are going to be able to accommodate that decision, too.
Mr. Golden, how fast, not, not counting this amendment, are you projecting that the school will fill up without this amendment?
Let me pull up our five-year attendance projections related to that.
You don't have it memorized?
I do not have that memorized. Maybe I should.
You can remember songs and not the end of them.
If I had set the numbers to music, I probably would remember. So, oh, sorry, Ms. Nunley is actually raising her hand. I'd like to defer to her, since she has an information offhand.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. The five-year projections that I have on hand, remembering that Spring Station is a nine hundred seventy-one capacity school, so when we took those students and rezoned them to Heritage Middle and Spring Station Middle, they go back under capacity and stay under capacity until 2024, 2025. And I apologize, I don't have the number of students that were rezoned to each one, but around two hundred is, would be correct. And may I say while I'm here, if, if you do pass this motion tonight, we have an online system. I can't guarantee that Spring Station would be on there at midnight, but we would have it done by nine AM tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just to add on to this discussion, one, one final thought from me, unless you have some additional questions. We did talk about meeting at the Policy Committee to discuss the, the, the policy, and one of the topics that we know needs some discussion is rising seventh and eighth graders in a middle school setting. I know there was much discussion about that, but we obviously haven't had that discussion at this point.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on this amendment? The motion by Mr. Elliot, can we read it to make sure we fully understand it now?
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
So, the motion to amend would allow twenty-five students from Heritage Middle or Thompson Station Middle who were rezoned to attend Spring Station for twenty, for 2020 to 2021 school year.
Okay. Does everybody understand what the motion is?
Was it being read wrong?
Yes.
Okay, we ready to vote? Do we, superintendent's recommendation is?
I can't recommend approval.
Okay. Did anybody want, Ms. Garrett, did you want to speak?
I would like for someone to clarify again.
Okay.
The, because of Allison's question.
So I'll read it one more time. I don't think I read everything I wrote down. Allow twenty-five students from Heritage Middle or Thompson Station Middle who were rezoned from Spring Station Middle to attend Spring Station for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you.
Okay, we good? Let's go ahead then. Record your votes, please.
Your vote is eight yes, four no.
All right, thank you. The amendment passes, so we're now back on the main motion as amended. Any comments or discussions back on the main motion? Okay. I see none. Superintendent's recommendation?
Recommend approval as amended.
Thank you. If you go ahead then, record your votes.
Your vote is twelve yes, zero no.
Okay, thank you, board. Our next item is the new central middle school name recommendation. As we discussed in the work session, we're going to vote on whichever name is, is entered first, we'll vote on that name. If it receives seven votes, then that will be the name. If it doesn't receive seven votes, then we will ask for a second name. Is that
That's correct.
The way you're describing it?
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may, add a caveat to that, as, as we mentioned at the work session, if the, if the first motion is not the one you want, my advice would be vote no. I think that's kind of self-explanatory, but I just wanted to make sure I articulated that.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion for a name? Mr. Cash?
Yes. Okay, we looking for some discussion?
A motion, motion first.
We need a motion, and you want to, you want to have a, you want to comment about after the motion's made? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So who, anyone like to make a motion for a name?
Oh, I would. I guess I have, I guess I have to start out. Go ahead. All right, so we want to, I'd like to make a motion that we name the new school Legacy.
Okay. Did anyone like to second that motion? We have a second from Mr. Welch. Thank you. Mr. Cash, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead, please.
I'd like to just take a few minutes to share what goes into the naming of a school. First, a committee's formed, of course, we have policy, but first, a committee's formed with staff members, board members from the district with, where the children will be going to school, county commissioners from the district the schools in, principals from the schools sending students, and those that will receive students from the new school. And also, the principal named for the new school are all on this committee. Many of the folks mentioned above have come up and through the ranks at Oakview Elementary. Our own superintendent of elementary school, Denise Goodwin, started out as a PE instructor, and has worked diligently for years to make this dream come true of a middle school. Many have had their own children and grandchildren, many on this list that I, I just read have children and grandchildren that went to Oakview. Some of the people on the committee even went to Oakview as children. We take this, take this input from all these folks, along with suggestions from parents. We compile all the names, and we boil it down to three names and submit it to the board for a vote. Some of the topics we discuss in detail, of course, we've got a policy on names and whatnot, but these are some of the additions. What does a name mean? Are there any other schools with that name? We take into consideration the history of the area the school is in. What is a possible mascot that goes along with a name? We even discuss what cheers would fit a name, and in some cases, we have a demonstration. My point is, is there's much thought and compassion that goes into these choices. Oakview Elementary School has had a long and rich history, or legacy, at this location created over many years by dedicated parents, students, teachers, principals, PTO members, and staff members. This rich legacy will continue for years and decades to come. Now it's time for the board to vote on a name for our new middle school that so many parents and people and out in the community and the input have dedicated time and effort to get this middle school built, and I thank you all for that. We will be drawing students from four elementary schools to fill the middle school. Students from many subdivisions and rural parts of the county will attend the new middle school. We have a new principal that has a long history with Oakview and Williamson County Schools. We will have a new PTO, new student council, new athletics, bands, and all the arts, all dedicated to creating a new legacy of their own at the middle school. I have received countless emails and some phone calls from parents, grandparents, and teachers. Some of these conversations were filled with all kinds of compassion for the area, for the names. I believe students, principals, PTO members, and dedicated parents would and want to create their own legacy for an independent new school. I believe this is an opportunity for our students to take ownership in this process. Ownership creates character, pride, and a purpose to be successful in their school. With all this being said, I'd like to make that motion for Legacy to be the name of the new school, and welcome all the students to create a strong and lasting legacy of their own. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would say, based on the feedback I've gathered from my constituents in District Eleven, that the most appropriate name for this middle school would be "Finally." And I, I really, if there's any consensus of opinion, it's thank goodness, thank you to the funding body, thank you to the construction team that this is actually happening. It's been a long road to get there. There's a lot more talk about sewer line than I ever thought I'd be involved in, in the school board position. But what we've boiled down to, I think, are three really good options, and I feel that the public sentiment has been shared on social media, many emails to the board, informal polls online, understanding that those are non-scientific. I feel my goal was to try to gauge the sense of the community. And I do believe that there's a preference for Oakview Middle School, but I also feel that for a, a kind of non-traditional, new and fresh name, Legacy has gotten a lot of support as well. I've seen that in particular from folks who would be attending, not from Oakview Elementary already, but I also know that they would be embraced in, in a school that did not share the name of their elementary school. I know that Dr. Justice will welcome all comers with open arms. This will be an excellent school, whatever name is chosen. This will be embraced by the community, and it's going to be a great opportunity for so many, so many children in our area.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, not that it's the intent of this name, but I, I felt like I wanted to share that in my industry, IT, computer industry, the term legacy refers to a program or a system that is no longer growing or being supported. And so it, it has kind of an indication in that industry at least, that it's, it's something that has, in the past, and it's not new, newer, upgraded or current. So that, that's kind of where I, that's my thoughts around that particular word, is that it's, I come to it with a bias, I guess, from my, how I, what I work with. Thank you. Any other comments or questions about the name? Mr. Galworth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I was, I had come into this thinking that, that our, our general thought process around naming schools was that we named, obviously, we named all of our K-8 schools with the same name, but that there was a, I don't, board norm is not a, is not a good word, but it seemed like the prevailing wisdom was that, that if a, if the elementary school and the middle school were not attached, then they would be, they would be named something different. And then I looked around the district and see that Grassland Elementary and Grassland Middle are not attached. They, they, they're in adjacent properties, and they share the same name as do Heritage Elementary and Middle. And I'm leaving one off. I'm sorry. Well, Page is across the street, and it's a high school, middle school. Fair view. And so they all, and so they, so we don't have an example of, of adjacent properties that don't share a, share a name. Thank you. Willen and Crockett, just in my district, I don't, I don't know. So, but it's, so it's funny, as we, as we thought about in, in the committee that was, that was formed, and we were talking about the Jordan name at the time, we were under the understanding that, that the name necessarily shouldn't be the same. And I, I don't remember if we got direction about that from anyone necessarily. I don't think we did. Denise, you're on the committee. Do you remember? I, our, we talked about it significantly, and maybe it was just a committee discussion about, because we, we discussed the middle school name, too, as, as a part of that, of whether we should think about a name that would, that would be ultimately the elementary and middle school, and, and, and we, we, we were inconclusive, and we, and we, and we, I feel like the discussion was that, that it wouldn't necessarily be the, the name, and it was preferable that it wasn't. So that didn't come from staff at all, that recommendation. That was just our discussion. I, I say that, just to say that I, I went into this thinking that it should be, should it be different? I realize that it's not as clear-cut, so I can, I can really go either way. I will tend to follow the lead of the, of the people that are, it's your, it's your district. And so, I mean, if y'all are, if y'all are unanimous, then I'm for whatever you all agree on. If you're not, then I guess I have a choice to make. So just want to hear what everybody in your, in your district thinks. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cleveland?
Yes, I'm in the same thing, vote as Jay is. I'm fifty-fifty, and I would really like to hear a little bit more from the district the reps are from. What I do, on Jay's point, I look at it as more of a community like Grassland, and like Mr. Vernon had said, that when we
Thank you. Ms. Cleveland?
Yes, I'm in the same thing, vote as Jay is. I'm 50/50 and I would really like to hear a little bit more from the districts the reps are from. What I do, on Jay's point, I look at it as more of a community like Grassland and like Mr. Vernon had said, that when referring to the area, Oakview is an area. It's the Oakview area. And just like we do the Grassland area, just like the Nolansville, you know, and so it's more to me, a, a convenient point of location for the school. And when someone says, you know, you know, I, I think about in my head, they say, well, go to Legacy Middle School. The question is, where's Legacy? Versus go to Oakview Middle. They'll know where Oakview, because it is a actual area. If it weren't an actual area, if it was just in the middle of, say Franklin or Brentwood or something like that, then I really probably would sway the other way, but somehow it's just the area is referred to as Oakview. But again, I'm 50/50 on this, so I'd like to hear more from the reps.
Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say it was, this is a big decision, you know, because this, this middle school's been worked on for years and years and it's been the hopes of many people. I know Mr. Vernon is one of them and I appreciate his input. As far as the emails and phone calls and whatnot, it's, it's pretty darn close. It's pretty darn close. But my thoughts, my real thoughts on it are, number one, you're going to have the first group of kids going in there, new everything, new instructors, everything. And it gives them pride to, to just start their school. It's all about the kids. It's their school. Oakview has a great history and legacy, so, and that's why I mentioned that. But we need, I just felt in my heart that we need to let this be a little bit independent since the, since the calls and everything were so close. We need to give that school some independence. You know, not that there's anything wrong with Oakview. Oakview will always have that legacy. But the community now has grown out. There's subdivisions all the way down 431. Now, we're going to have one just west or east of 65. We've got all the way down to McLemore Farms. We're going almost all the way over to Carter's Creek Pike. There's going to be kids coming from all different areas now that have no clue what the Oakview community is. So what I'm trying to say in a nice way is, the community has grown. It's, has grown. You know, most people will know where Oakview's at, but you know what? First football game or something, they're going to know exactly where Legacy's at. You know? That, that's just what I've compiled in my mind from constituents. The name sounds great, a lot of people love it. Some just want Oakview. You know, so that's why I recommended Legacy.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I fully appreciate that I'm not helping to make an easy decision with, with representing the slight preference for Oakview, but as Mr. Cash mentioned, it is very closely split as far as the feedback. I, I think that there were, there were very few comments where somebody said, this is a deal breaker, can't, can't live with that. It was very much between Oakview and Legacy. And, and I think that when you have a really difficult decision, it probably means that you have two really good options, if that helps any.
Ms. Garrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was also on the committee, so now I'm going to do a quick round robin of some of the items that have been brought up. Elliot, I also work in IT and I understand legacy systems and things like that, but the, the reason described for the Legacy name was not a pa, a look at the past, but a look at building a legacy into the future with this new school. And that is going to be the administration and professionals' focus. One other thing, we've, we've said that there's, it's been said that Oakview is a community name. That name actually is a little bit different than the name of Grassland. Grassland, the name Grassland Community is on the maps from the 1800s. That, this community became known as Oakview in 1992 when that school, when the first elementary school opened. And one thing I've thought about, about the names is that it seems that when two properties have the same name that are near each other, they were usually built out around the same time, when, when that area was new. For example, the Page area, when that area was new. So it's not, it's not, to me, it's not just as much of a retrofit to name, you know, this is a completely different situation. We've had this property for how many years? Since 1992?
It's a little less than that, but somewhere around 20 years.
So this is a, this is a unique situation in, in our history of building out elementary and middles near each other. And the constituents that I represent, who will be going to this school, are not from that Oakview feeder and that, their feedback has trended more toward the Legacy name. But there is, I, I will emphasize that there is strong, you know, support of the Oakview name and, and it's my perception that comes from primarily from that Oakview experience. One of the things that was said by the, the two high school principals that will, that this school will feed to, Dr. Sanders and Dr. Patton, were on the committee. And Dr. Patton emphasized that, you know, knowing where Independence was might have been an issue, but once the school gets, the school gets established and has their reputation, that it's no problem to find the school anymore. So those are just various things I heard along the way. But this is a bit of a unique situation going in, you know, 25 years after and building the school next door. So that, that would be what really stands out in this one to me.
Thank you. Mr. Wimberly?
I guess to supplement what Ms. Garrett said, in addition to being a place on the map, the Grassland has a geopolitical designation as a village. It is a Grassland Village Special Area, for what that's worth to you. Grassland. I'd like to propose that the school be named Grassland Middle too. That's right. Nobody. Yeah, that's right.
Sammerson? He's off. I turned his mic off. Sammerson?
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. I just, I really like the idea of this new school being able to establish itself on its own rather than being tied to the Oakviews that are already there. Not to diminish that at all, they're excellent schools, but I think you've got a brand new school, you've got a brand new, a lot of new kids coming in, creating new community that really, you're not going to have that tied to Oakview as strongly as the Oakview students have because of their, their history with being at Oakview schools. And I just, I like the idea of this school having the opportunity to build its own new identity with the kids that come in, the teachers that come in, the, the new things that are going to happen there that are not happening and, you know, obviously in the other schools, because this is brand new and they're creating their own identity. And that's what I think is very important. And I don't want to diminish that chance for them to be able to do that by tying them to a wonderful legacy, but it's other schools' legacies already. They've already created a legacy and this gives this new school an opportunity to be identified individually. And I just think it's important that we, you know, it's convenient to use the Oakview. It's an incredible school. Denise Goodwin, you know, has done so much to create that huge, long-lasting legacy there. But I think it's important that we give this new school an opportunity, the new teachers and everything else, an opportunity to establish what they want for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
I'd like to call the question, please.
Okay. Calling the question. Nobody else wants to speak? We're good? We ready to vote?
Let's go.
And your, and your recommendation is you'll work with any name?
Yes, sir. I will work with any name. I, I do recommend approval because it was the, it was the first motion placed on the floor and recommend approval of the motion for Legacy. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, folks, if you'll go ahead and record your votes.
Your vote is 10 yes, 2 no?
Okay, we have a new name for the school, Legacy Middle School. Thank you, board members, for being so involved with the discussions and the staff for working with us to go through the names. I can remember being on some of those naming committees and a particular name of a school that's in my area that I did not want originally, Mill Creek, because my baggage on it was, I lived through the Mill Creek floods. And so to me, it had a bad connotation and they talked me out of it and I'm very proud that it's called Mill Creek now. So hopefully everyone will be just as proud of the school when it's, when it's known as Legacy. So thank you all very much for the, for the votes. The new, the next item, I'm sorry, is the Board Policy First Reading, 3.3002, Service Animals.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a revision of, of, of a board policy and you all see the lines based on our description. And it is recommended by our attorney, Dana Osbrook, so I recommend approval.
Anyone like to make a motion on this one? We have a motion for Ms. Emerson. I want to second it. We have a second from Mr. Mitchell. Any further discussions on this particular policy? Okay, I see none and we have the superintendent's recommendation. If you'd go ahead then and record your votes, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no?
Thank you. The next policy is 3.4001 on special transportation. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend approval of the, the changes to the special transportation for students with disabilities, first reading. I do want to mention those of you who weren't at the work session, I mean, at the, at the policy committee meeting, that there was some discussion about some of the, some of the wording, but for first reading, I definitely recommend approval.
Anyone like to make a motion on first reading for this policy? Okay, Ms. Emerson's motion, Mr. Mitchell's second. Any further discussions on this one? Okay, I see none. We have the superintendent's recommendation. If you'd record your votes, please.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no?
Thank you. The next policy is 5.109 on evaluation. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, this is a change to the evaluation policy, the teacher evaluation policy that, that references the, the state regulations, actually the state policy. So I recommend approval on first reading.
Anyone like to make a motion for this policy for first reading?
I'll do it again. I think it's a great change.
Okay, Ms. Emerson made the motion. Mr. Hawes is second. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, I see none. We have the superintendent's recommendation. Please record your votes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no?
Okay, that brings us to the end of another fun-filled evening of the Williamson County School Board, but we do have a point of privilege request from Ms. Garrett. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this brief, but hopefully we'll end on a really positive note. We've all talked about how Creekside Elementary, our 49th school, opens tomorrow. Now, every school built has a unique story and here is Creekside's. Number one, it was built in 12 months. It's a 14-month build-out, but it got built in 12 months. How did it get in 12, built in 12 months? Pardon? Oh, you said age. That's even better. How did it get built so quickly? Well, it got built quickly because of some amazing professionals who worked for Williamson County Schools, even during significant rains that impacted the ability to get the site cleared and the foundations laid early on. How was this monumental effort accomplished? Well, we have a great team here, folks. Gary Hall, Patrick Harrigan, Kelly Joris, and our leader director, Kevin Fortney. They were able to overcome one of the rainiest years that we've had in who knows when. Their ability to quickly, quickly and accurately ID and resolve issues so that the project could continue to progress is a skill that this team has mastered and puts to work for our county again and again. So we are very much appreciative for that, about that. And a great team usually means that there's a great leader. And Kevin, I know that you don't like the limelight and a good leader usually doesn't. So I just want to say a significant and heartfelt thank you for all you do for our students and for all you have done to get this school open on such a quick turnaround. So thank you.
Mr. Fortney, would you like to say anything?
Sure. For a change. Thank you, first of all, Ms. Garrett. I appreciate it. You're right, it does take a team to do it. When I said eight months, the first three months, we had nothing but troubles. Wet weather, soil issues, underground streams it seemed like and we thought at one point we're never going to get it done. But our contractor stepped up to the plate, that's RG Anderson, and it's the men and women that work out on the job. We had almost as many female ladies working on the electrical contractor's side as we did the men. We had lady, women out there laying brick. The neatest one is the iron worker. And, and she was just a pleasure to talk to each day that we were out there. So it goes to all of those involved in the project, but primarily to the workers out there that were out there until just the other day, laying asphalt in cold weather, rainy weather, and, and getting things accomplished and taking pride in what they do. So I'm going to close by saying one thing. I went out to Creekside today when the kindergarteners, kindergarten first and second grade, were brought to the building to take a real brief tour through. And as they were lining up to go back home to their, their place over at Oakview, one little boy stopped and saw a staircase that the door was open as he went into the cafeteria to then go out and get on the bus. He grabbed the little guy in front of him, pulled him back, and they looked up the stairwell. He says, "Look, there must be hundreds and thousands of stairs up there." So it kind of gives you a different perspective of it became a school today. And I think that's the most important thing. So thank you for your kind words. The team appreciates it.
Thank you. Mr. Golden?
Mr. Chair, I want to thank Ms. Garrett for, for thanking Mr. Fortney. I've known Kevin and worked with him, being coworkers around 14 years, and I've never seen anybody better. Many of you know that I worked, worked a lot of real estate before I started representing this school district, while I was representing other school districts and doing, doing some private work as well. And it takes a special person to run a project and it takes a rare, exceptional person to run it so well. And Kevin's been doing it day after day, year after year. As we praise him for this one, he's got another one going up at Legacy and, and many other projects as well. So he's, he's, he's a, he's a great leader for the, for the people he works with and he leads with, with his expertise and the force of his personality, not because of his title. And, and I very much appreciate him and his work.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone being here this evening. Mr. Fortney, thank you very much. I've worked with you for years and years and years and you are definitely a very special person for, for Williamson County. special person for, for Williamson County Schools and all that you do. Thank you very much for your dedication and effort. Board members, we're at the end. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.